Okay, I'm getting a little interference for everyone to please use their microphone. Okay, thank you so much. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April 28th, 2025 special Connecticut IANS meeting. Tonight, we have Peter Alessandria speaking with us. Peter is an award-winning internationally published photographer, author, TEDx speaker, and filmmaker. His feature-length documentary entitled "Every Soul Knows: The Joy of Remembering Who We Really Are" includes interviews with more than 60 near-death experiencers, channels, psychics, and mediums. Peter has designed audience meditation and movement into the two-and-a-half-hour movie experience, and the film, which recently premiered at the IANS Annual Conference in Phoenix, explores our true nature as eternal spiritual beings. We are delighted that Peter is going to come to Connecticut on May 29th to have two showings of his film at Manchester Community College. We are so excited. And with that introduction, Peter, please take the stage.
All right. Thank you, Bethany, and everybody who's here tonight, thank you for being here. It's an honor to speak with you guys, to see you guys. I want to thank Bethany in particular for helping steward and move forward the screening that's happening on the 29th of May in Manchester. And it's exciting. It's, uh, this is part of, I'm gonna talk a little bit about my journey, and this is part of a dream come true for me, to be out there with the film showing it to the world. Just a little background on me, real quick. I'm based in the New Jersey area, originally from New York. I got to New Jersey by way of Los Angeles. I started out life, my professional life, as an entertainment attorney in LA, working in the film business, and eventually found my way back to the East Coast and have been pursuing my love for visual creativity. I've been a photographer and a filmmaker for the last 15 years. I left the law behind in 2009. And I've been on a journey. I've been a seeker. I'm not an experiencer, per se, like some of you guys, but I've had this desire to know, to understand, to make sense of this life that many of us find ourselves living. And so, really, for the last 30 years, I've been kind of on a journey of trying to answer some of the bigger questions, at least the questions that I have. A lot of it was just to make my life, to kind of alleviate some of the suffering in my life, to improve my relationships, things like that. And it's all kind of culminated, in 2019, I actually injured myself while working, and I was at a commission for a while, and I did two things during that time off. One was I wrote my own book. My book is called Be Bigger Than You Think You Are: Overcoming Our Self-Imposed Limits to Have the Life We Want. It's kind of a personal empowerment book, and it talks about my journey from lawyer to photographer and filmmaker, and some of the challenges I faced, and how I overcame those challenges. And so, that book came out of an injury. I actually was sidelined for almost a year in 2019. And the other thing I did in 2019 is I read a book, another book, and it was actually a novel, and it was about the afterlife. The book is called Adventures in the Afterlife by William Beulahman, and that book kind of rocked my world. I had some familiarity with the near-death experience and some of the spiritually transformative experiences people talk about, but I hadn't really dived into it. And when I read that novel, even though it was nonfiction, there was a lot of truth in that book for me about the afterlife, and that kind of pushed me in a different direction. I eventually optioned the novel from the author with the intent of turning it into a feature film. And while I was writing the screenplay based on the book, I started doing a lot of research. And so, this is towards the end of 2019. 2020 hits, we're all home because of the pandemic, and I'm really spending a lot of time now investigating the near-death experience and other spiritually transformative experiences. My primary way of doing that was YouTube, and I started reaching out to some of the people. I started watching a lot of interviews, podcasts, interviews with people who had these experiences. Excuse me. And I started reaching out to them. And at first, it was under the auspices of research for the film I was working on, but at a certain point, I realized that I needed to do a documentary about all this. And it was really a moment of clarity where I was literally waiting for, I was making breakfast. Some of you guys know Christian Sundberg. Christian is a pre-birth memory guy, wonderful person, and I actually had a Zoom set up with him that day, and I'm waiting for my toast to pop. I'm making breakfast, and the toast pops up, and in that moment, I have this idea, and the idea is I have to make a documentary film about all this. So, I actually asked Christian that day if he wanted to be involved. He said yes, and it just kind of went from there. And I spent the last, so this was, so now we're getting into late, I had to finish my book, so probably late 2020 into 2021, and I started reaching out to more people, and I started conducting interviews shortly after that. So, I've been working on this film now, actually, it had to be later than that. It was probably in 20, I've been working on the film for about two years, and to date, I've interviewed over 60 people. Many of them are near-death experiencers, many of them are channels, psychics, and mediums. And when I started on this project, one of the things I didn't want to do was sensationalize the death experience. I really wanted to keep the focus on what these people learned from their experience and how we can take what they learned and apply that to our lives while we're still here, or while we still think we're here, to make our lives better. And so, I came up with a list of questions, 35 questions, and if you go to the website, it's very simple, three words, everysoleknows.com. If you go to that website, you'll see those 35 questions there. Questions like, what is the soul? Do we have soul contracts? Do we have soul groups and soul families? What's karma? Is there such a thing as hell? And on and on and on. And those questions became the basis of the interviews that I was conducting. And I had a bunch of people here who had near-death experiences, and I didn't let any of them tell their story, mostly because, again, I really wanted to avoid sensationalizing it, kind of distracting people with the car accident, the bot surgery, the illness, you know, whatever it was. And then about a year later, I realized, you know, there is value in telling the stories. So, I went back to a bunch of people, and I found a bunch of new people. And so, the film, as you'll see tonight, I'm gonna show you a clip. It's about 18 minutes long. The film is basically has two components. One is this question and answer. So, I ask a question, and I ask everybody the same question. And so, what's really interesting is, there was about 40 people who participated in that part of the project. A lot of them gave very similar answers, to the point where they're almost finishing each other's sentences. And so, you'll see, and you have to remember, these were interviews that took place over probably between one and two years of time. None of the people knew. I didn't tell anybody who I was interviewing for the film, so nobody knew who else was in the film. They were, many of them were done in different locations, so, but everybody's giving very similar answers, to the point where it feels like, again, they're finishing each other's sentences. So, it became a really powerful way for me to present the material. And then, the second part are these first-person accounts of their near-death experience or other spiritually transformative experience. My goal with the film, you know, is to help us all remember who we really are. The basic premise is that until we change our idea about ourselves, not much is gonna change in the world, you know. In a sense, in a way, this world actually makes sense of who we are, are these bodies that have a limited lifespan, maybe 75 years if we're lucky. We have to fight with other bodies over resources and ideologies and all of that stuff. The world kind of makes sense. Now, it's not a very pleasant place. There's a lot of suffering. There's a lot of heartache, but it kind of makes sense. But if that's not who we really are, if we're something more than these physical bodies, if when the body's life ends, we continue, to me, that changes everything, right? That begins to present a whole new way of looking. And we'll talk about some of the common themes that come out of the near-death experience, things like experiencing unconditional love, experiencing oneness and unity. If that's our true nature, if that's who and what we really are, then this world makes no sense at all. And so, the idea is that by bringing these, and I'm kind of positioning this as Afterlife 101, this is for people who may never heard of a near-death experience, or don't know what the life review is, you know, things like that. So, I'm trying to present it in a way that's very accessible for people, that I feel is addressing some of the common questions that many people have. And I just want to plant the seed, right? I just want to give people something, perhaps something different, a different way to look at things, maybe different from their childhood religion, or their culture, or their society, and to begin to maybe question some of the beliefs that I feel are not serving us. So, it's presented, again, you'll see a clip in a few minutes, it's presented in a way that I hope is entertaining, that I hope is accessible and understandable for people. One of the things that I did, you can see a complete listing of all the people in the film on the website, but it was really important for me to do two things. One was to give new people a chance. So, about half the people in the film, you've never seen before, or maybe not as much as some of the other people in the film. And that was really important for me to give new people a chance to shine, a new people, a chance for new people to tell their story and to participate. And then, the people who are, but I also wanted to reach out to the people who are known in the space, people who, you know, have written books and who have, who've been out there with their stories. I also wanted to bring them in on the project. And so, it's a really beautiful mix of new and old people, stories that complement each other, I feel like, in very powerful ways. Before I forget, I want to thank IANS, because IANS has been a wonderful, wonderful friend of the project from day one. And it was a joy for me. I actually attended the last two conferences. I attended the conference in DC in 2023, but if you were there, you didn't see me, because I only came out of my hotel room once. The rest of the time I was there, for five days, I was conducting interviews. I had people come through. I was interviewing people. And then, last year, at the conference in Phoenix, we actually premiered, it wasn't, it was a premiere of a preview. I'm still editing the film. I actually just finished my last interview a couple weeks ago, and now I'm still editing. So, what I'm showing now is still technically a preview, and, but it's a completed film. The thing that I have now is I have about six hours of content. I've conducted over 100 hours of interviews, and I've kind of whittled it down to about six hours, five and a half, six hours, and I'm gonna find a way to present that. It might be six one-hour episodes. What you're gonna see on the 29th in Manchester of May is, it's gonna be about a two hours, two hours and 15 minutes, and it, you know, it's a completed film. It has a beginning, middle, and end, and you'll see a lot of it, but you won't see everything, because we can't do a five-hour, six-hour screening. So, but it'll give you a really good sense of what the film is about. If for some reason, you're not able to make the Connecticut screening, there is a preview that's available online. You can watch it. It's a $3.99 rental. I'm just, I have to try to cover some of the costs of the web hosting and all of that. If the money is an issue, just let me know. I'll refund it. I don't have a problem with that. I want people to be able to see it. And then, I will be taking it on the road. So, after Connecticut, I will be going down to Maryland, to DC, and Virginia, then down to North Carolina, and then to Atlanta. And there may be some other stops along the way. So, I'm actually having a road trip, a two-week road trip in June, where I'm gonna be showing the film. And one of the things that's been really important for me is to do the audience Q and A after the film. So, there's a lot of people who attend the screening who are not familiar with the near-death experience, they're not familiar with the life review. Some of the people, they're interested in the subject matter, but they don't really know a lot about it. Some of them have recently experienced a loss in their family, and so, or maybe they have a fear of their own death, their own mortality. And so, it's been really gratifying for me to be able to answer people's questions on the spot after the screening. So, we did a screening here in New Jersey in January, and I was lucky. I had about 10 people from the film at the screening. And afterwards, everybody came, you know, from the film, everybody came to the front of the theater, and we started taking questions. And most of the audience stayed, and most of them had some really profound, important questions, you know, and we were able to help people deal with some of these issues. So, that's been a wonderful part of the process for me. And in Connecticut, I don't know, I don't know who's gonna be there from the film, but if there is somebody who is an experiencer and who wants to participate, they're more than welcome to join us afterwards for the Q and A, the audience Q and A. And we will have two screenings. One is at noon, and the other one is at 5:00 PM. All the information is available, again, on the website, everysoleknows.com. And, let's see, what else was I gonna say about all that? So, I'm financing the film myself. I've actually devoted the last two years of my life to this, and a big part of my journey in this process is, as I said, I'm not an experiencer myself, but two years ago, actually, yeah, it'd be two years ago this month, my younger brother passed away unexpectedly. And it was, it was a devastating experience. It was, it was the most difficult experience I've ever had in my life, quite honestly. And it was this film that helped me get through it. You know, it was working on this film, reaching out to the people that I had interviewed. There are a bunch of mediums in the film, and my brother's come through a bunch of times, actually, and he's now a part of this film, which is really ironic, because my brother was not a believer in the afterlife. My brother was a really kind of tough New Yorker, and I actually went to visit him. I hadn't seen him in a couple of years, and I went to visit him, and I spent a week with him, and I was in his living room, and I was watching an NDE video on my tablet, and he overheard it, and he said, "You don't really believe that stuff, do you?" And, you know, I wasn't sure how to respond, and so, I didn't really say anything after that. And then, again, it was this film, I'm smiling now, because I honestly believe that his passing was a part of our soul plan together, our soul's journey together, you know. And I know he's a part of this. He's, as I said, he's come through several times now in the mediums, with various mediums, and the film is dedicated to him. But I did have, you know, I did come to that point where I really had to say, you know, how much do I believe this stuff, right? I know I wanted to believe, and I feel like everybody that I interviewed in the film is credible, you know, and I'm grateful for every one of them. You know, they've all touched me, and they've all changed my life. You know, my hat's off to all you guys. Any of you guys who are experiencers and who are sharing your story publicly, you guys are the heroes, right? You know, none of the people that I interviewed, at least from what I could tell, are getting rich off of this, you know, even the ones who've written books. And most of them, you know, have to put up with a lot of crap. And again, I'm sure some of you know all about that, whether it's publicly or just in their own family. And the fact that they're still out there, and many of them are telling their story for years, and I got very clearly that, you know, they're coming from a place where they want to help. They want to help humanity. They want to help people, and that's their motivation. And so, whatever I can do to help them get their story out, and again, it was, again, it was really important for me to not do it in a sensationalistic kind of way. I feel like you won't see any B-roll of, you know, accident scenes and other stuff, and there's nothing wrong with that, because I know there are other filmmakers that do it that way, and that's great. But for me, I really wanted to keep the focus on what did they experience, and how can we use that to improve our lives while we're still here. So, things like, again, I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, because some of you probably have firsthand experience with this, but a couple of the common elements of the near-death experience. So, they almost always start with the out-of-body experience. So, it's some, for some reason, they've left their body, person has left their body, and they have an experience of being able to kind of look back on themselves and to see the accident scene, or the operating room, or maybe they're just meditating, and they have an out-of-body experience. But there's some sense that there's a separation from the physical body and a recognition that, oh, that's not me. That's not who I really am. In some cases, they don't even recognize that body as who they were. So, there's this idea that we're not our physical bodies. Another common experience is, they go into a space of, some call it the void, some call it the tunnel. There's an experience of unconditional love, a sense of peace that is unmatched in this world, right? Many of them say there aren't words to describe what I was feeling, what I was experiencing. And it was an overwhelming sense of peace, an overwhelming sense of unconditional love, to the point where I recognize that's who and what I really am, is this love, right? And then, another common element, I'm just gonna mention three, is this idea of oneness, this idea of unity, this recognition that we are all connected, that we're all part of a greater whole, right? Now, why do I mention those three things? Well, what if we started living our lives while we're still here from that place? The recognition that perhaps I'm not my body. Now, again, I want to be really careful here when I say this. This is not in any way to minimize the bodily experience or the physical experience. It's not that we ignore our bodies. It's not that we ignore other people's bodies, but we can be in the world, but not of it, with this recognition that, oh, there's something more. And it directly relates to this idea of death. Now, tonight, you're gonna see a clip from the film about where we address the question of what is death. And you may not be surprised by some of the answers, but a lot of people in the screenings that have seen this have been very surprised by some of the answers. But it's a way to help remove some of the fear, some of the trepidation, some of the worry that accompanies the death experience, whether it's our own or somebody that we love. And if we're all connected, if we're all part of a greater whole, then in a very real sense, what I do for you, I do for myself. And what I fail to do for you, I fail to do for myself. So, it begins to transform, and this idea of love, this bond that we all have that's based in this sense of unconditional love, which is about goodness, which is about compassion, which is about understanding, which is about inclusion. You know, just imagine, and I'm sure many of you guys have pondered this, especially if you've had your own experience, what the world could be like if we could begin to relate to each other from those places, from that point of view. And so, that's what I'm hoping to accomplish with the film. As Bethany mentioned at the beginning, you're not gonna see it tonight, but I stopped the film several times for a guided meditation. It's a two-minute guided meditation, and I invite the audience, I say, "You've heard what everybody else has to say about this subject. Now, you're invited to go within and discover your own inner wisdom and your own highest truth on this," because I really want people to come away with a sense of their own guidance, their own wisdom about all of this. So, we're not trying, we're not preaching. We're not trying to convince anybody of anything. I don't offer any evidence. There's no, you know, the very, the vertical evidence that people talk about, and the scientific studies that Bruce Grayson and everybody else has been doing for years is great. There's a huge body of what I feel is credible evidence, but I'm not even going there. I'm not even trying, I'm not gonna try to convince anybody of anything. I just want to share what I've learned and what these other people have learned from their experiences, and then let the audience decide for themselves. The last thing I'll say is, I don't have any kids of my own, but I have eight nieces and nephews, and my, three of my nieces and nephews have attended a couple of the screenings, and two of them are twins, they're 10 years old. And, you know, these kids can't really sit still for anything, as most 10-year-olds can't. And they have sat through a 90-minute preview and a two-hour and 15-minute preview. They've sat through it from beginning to end, right? And I know if I can reach them, I can reach anybody. So, we'll pause here. I'm gonna ask for questions after. So, let's watch the preview that will, it's almost 20, it's about 18 minutes long. Let's watch this. And then, when we come back, we'll, I'll wrap up, and then we can open up for questions. So, let me pull this up. All right. Hopefully, you can see that, and you can hear it.
I'm not afraid to die. I just don't want to be there when it happens.
Peter, we've lost the sound.
Can you hear it now?
30 minutes for sure, maybe even an hour and a half. What I experienced-
All right, it's coming through my mic. I didn't realize that.
-beautiful thing. It's just the process that we go through to go home.
I'm gonna back up.
Death is not a human will ever have.
Death is an absolutely amazing thing. I was dead for well over 30 minutes for sure, maybe even an hour and a half. What I experienced was an amazing, beautiful thing. It's just the process that we go through to go home. Death is an absurdity that is just as ridiculous as the notion of birth in the first place.
Death is essentially walking from one room of a house into another. You're walking from the room that is the Earth School, and you're walking into the room that is the non-physical realm we call home.
Death is the rebirth of the soul. They say that dying is like taking off a tight shoe that has been killing you all day.
Of course, there is the death of the physical body, but you do not die.
More times than I can count. I have taken so many people through different experiences of learning how to connect to their loved ones on the other side, and I can tell you, there is no death. When the soul releases the body, our bodies dissolve, but that's not who we really are.
When we die, we wake up back into our natural soul-spirit state and remember, oh, this is who I really am. No matter how real that seemed, that was a dream I was having for a certain purpose. But now, I am awake. Now, I am back in understanding fully that this is who I really am.
Death is just a change of form, of frequency, of energy. I don't believe that we truly ever die. When our time in this body is done, we expand, we move on. That is why we're here. We're here to evolve.
I've had a near-death experience, and I've been able to look at death right in its eyes. And I can tell you that from a human perspective, death is real, but from a spiritual perspective, there is no death. The soul will go on far beyond this body.
That was one of the messages I was sent back with. Go back and tell them, life is eternal. There is no death.
But meanwhile, that soul that animated the body still exists, and the role the soul was playing as you and as I continues across the veil, but without a body. So, death is really a transition to a new state of being, but you carry with you the full awareness of everything that you experienced while in a physical body.
So, it's nothing to be afraid of. After death, actually, spirits feel very calm and relaxing and happy and free.
So, death is a doorway from one dimension into another. Many people believe that when they pass through death's door, that there's some sort of change in energy. Well, there's not. There's a saying, like, wherever you go, there you are, even to the other side.
In ICU, I have the opportunity to see a lot of death. I can feel many times when a patient makes their transition, that on the other end, there's a great sense of release. Death for the one dying and for those around them is an opportunity to remember that we are so, so much more, and that which we are continues forever.
So, death in the soul perspective is going back home, reviewing the life that you just had, and getting your credit for all of the classes that you passed this time around on Earth School. In my own near-death-like experience, that was exactly what happened. It was as if I had woken up from a dream, and I had woken up in home. And it was this great feeling of joy and freedom and release, and there was no bondage from my past with me. It was this beautiful moment of awakening.
It is not a final end. I have experienced it for myself. I have direct personal knowledge that your self within you moves on, and all- And all the ones that you have loved that have transitioned before you are waiting for you on the other side in this other dimension.
It's like going home. You know, where we come from is those higher realms. And we all seek that and miss it. We all know that as where we truly come from.
When we transition, our spirit guides try to make it as comfortable for us as possible. So people who believe in the pearly gates or something like that will have that sort of setup for them to experience. It's different for everyone, but I think most people find from my experience in communicating with the other side, that it's, it's delightful.
I've seen many eastern cultures where death is just a part of life. Because there's an understanding that there's a continuation of consciousness. In the Western culture, we seem to have locked that in under religious beliefs that when we die, we go to heaven or we go to hell. What I've seen so far is there are multiple heavens and multiple hells. Each relate to what you believe in.
Now I will also say as a near-death survivor, that where you go is largely dependent on your consciousness at the time. What eventually happened to me and my near-death experience is I went into the etheric realms. And I went into a place where I would have probably been stuck as a ghost for many, many years. So you get to choose with your consciousness how you complete this life.
What we leave behind is this physical dead body. And we're reborn into a conscious life that is the real, true life, our true home. When you transition over and you have the ability to look back briefly at this life, it's almost as though it was dull and dead all along. What you transition to is pure joy. The feeling of life is indescribable. It's like being a kid again when you, you didn't walk anywhere, you ran everywhere. It's as though you truly have been reborn.
Tony Satoria, M.D., was struck by lightning during a family outing. In his near-death experience, Tony discovered that the soul continues after the loss of the body.
In 1994, my wife had a party, which she has every year for her family. Because there's so many people with birthdays in August. And so we would have a communal birthday party. This year, she decided to have it at the Sleepy Hollow Lake in Athens, New York. It's a beautiful lake and we had a pavilion that was rented right next to the lake. And in the morning, it seemed like it was a beautiful day. And there were about 25 people there with a ton of kids as well. I was out at the barbecue doing my job and I remembered that I hadn't called my mother that day. It was quite elderly. I walked around the building and there was a payphone on the other side of this pavilion. And I put in her number and let it ring five or six times and she never picked up. And so I said, well, I'll try again later. What I was not aware of is that a huge thunderhead had formed over the lake. And it was completely unbeknownst to me. When I had the phone next to my ear and I was starting to take it away to hang it up, suddenly I saw this huge flash of light comes out of the phone and hits me in the face. And I hear this incredibly loud crack. And it just threw me back like a rag doll. I went flying backwards. And a strange thing happened as, as, as this was going on was I knew I had been hit by lightning. I saw it, I heard it, and I knew I'd been thrown backwards. But suddenly had this strange sensation of moving forwards. And I was very confused by it. And I remembered standing there going, I don't understand. I, I know I got hit. I know I got thrown back. And so why am I standing here wondering what just happened? As I was standing there, all of a sudden I hear my mother-in-law screaming and she's at the top of the stairs. I'm at the bottom. She starts running down the stairs right at me and, and I thought, this can't be good. I mean, your mother-in-law screaming and running at you, something bad's going to happen. As she was coming down the stairs, I realized that she's not looking at me. She's looking off to her left. And I thought, what the hell is going on? As she gets down to the, right where I was, it was like I didn't exist. And she just took off to her left. And I thought, oh, I'm going to follow her. I went probably three or four steps. And all of a sudden I was confronted with myself on the ground. And I remember looking down at this body and I thought, oh shit, I'm dead. And I remember that, you know, that my mind was racing like crazy at the time. And I'm thinking, wait a minute. You know, I, I thought when you died, there'd be some bells and whistles or something would, would give you a clue that you were dead, but I had nothing. It was, it was absolutely seamless. The only thing I could think of was that when I had that sensation of moving forward as my body was going backwards, that was my spirit separating from the body. And so here I am, standing there, I'm right at the head of, head of this body and I'm, I'm looking down and and realizing that I, that I'm dead. I'm not in that body. And I get this sudden realization that, jeez, I'm thinking just like I normally would. I, I'm thinking in the same vernacular that I would normally think. And it came to me that whoever I am, I always am. And this body is nothing but an empty shell that my spirit spent some time in. And I realized that there is no death. That our spirit just continues on. The moment we leave the earthly body, we move to the next phase. There was a woman who was standing behind me, waiting to use the phone. She was there with her 12 or 13-year-old daughter. And it turns out that she was a nurse. And she ran over to me and she was, got down on the floor and she was going to start CPR. And so she starts doing CPR and everybody's crowding around. And at this point, I'm thinking, well, there's no point in standing here. I wanted to go check on my family. And so I turned around and walked away. And I walked over to the stairs and I started going up the stairs. And I get to about the third step, all of a sudden I realized that my legs are starting to dissolve. And I thought, holy crap. What is happening? And as I was going up the stairs, my form dissolved. I was nothing more than a ball of energy. By the time I got to the top of the stairs, that's all I was. And at that point, I thought, well, the stairs go off to the left to, to make the second transition. And I said, the heck with this. I just went right through the wall. When I got through the other side of that wall, my wife was sitting on a chair and she was painting children's faces. She had no idea what had happened. And I made a specific note to myself of, of who the kids were and what position they were in, the position of the chairs and tables. And I don't know why I made a specific point of, of memorizing that, but it would turn out to be an important factor later on when, when it came time to check notes and see what I really witnessed. And that there was no possible way for me to have witnessed. And I continued. And I, I went diagonally through that room. And I had the realization that, you know, my family would be fine without me. And as I got to the roof line, I went through the roof and things really started to change at that point. Suddenly, I'm falling into a river of pure positive energy. It was most unbelievable thing I've ever felt. If you could imagine absolute love and absolute peace, that's all you felt in this energy. And the energy went through everything and actually composed everything. As I was feeling this and came to this realization, this is the greatest thing that could ever happen to somebody. I mean, dying is one thing, but being able to die and experience this is unbelievable. So this river of pure positive energy is carrying me someplace and I didn't care where it was going because it felt so amazingly great. I remember thinking, this must be the God energy. And I realized that we're all part of this same energy force. And we are all connected. So I'm floating in this river of pure positive energy and I was resigned to the fact that I was not going to see my family again. I was, I was off on a new adventure. And so I reached the point where I'm ecstatic about where it's taking me. I, I was so excited about it. And all of a sudden, boom, I was back in my body. It was like somebody had flipped a switch and I was pissed. I remember lying there going, no, I don't want to come back. Don't make me do this. I loved where I was going. I want to, I want to complete that. But I was back. The lady who had been doing CPR had stopped and she was just kneeling next to me. I looked at her and I said, it's okay. I'm a doctor. She just laughed and said, you weren't a minute ago. I was embarrassed and so I just kept my mouth shut. At this point, the police came and they called an ambulance and I refused to go to the hospital because as a physician, I know what going to the emergency room is going to mean. I'm going to sit there for hours and hours. And they're going to tell me, yeah, you're alive, go home. I went home and I saw my physicians and they said I was okay and they cleared me to go back to work. And I was absolutely mystified by what had happened and, and what it meant. So the big lesson there is, there is no death. And your spirit continues on and is everlasting. When we die, it's just a change. It's a phase change. We enter into a different state. But our spirit lives on. To know that there is something else that occurs after death is the greatest gift that anyone could ever give me. And to know that there is a force of absolute love and peace.
All right. Let me stop sharing. Hold on. Sorry, it got cut off there at the end. Sorry about that. Okay, can you guys hear me? Oh, okay. Um, yeah, there was just a little bit more after that. So, so there you go. That's, that's a sample. You know, I got, I got five more hours of that. Just wonderful people telling wonderful stories, sharing their wisdom, sharing their experience in a very loving way, very positive way. My goal is to uplift people. I want people after they see this movie to feel good, to feel uplifted, to feel empowered. You know, I don't want anybody to be afraid. I don't want anybody to feel guilty, you know, none of that. This is all positive, empowering message. And the other thing I was going to say, I forgot to mention, I'll mention it now. One of the ways that I want, so, so everybody's, so there's over 60 interviews. Everybody's full-length interview is currently available on the film website, everysoulknows.com. And also on the film YouTube channel, at Every Soul Knows. So you can see Tony's full interview. His full interview is almost an hour. One of the interesting things about Tony is that after he came back, he became a concert pianist, like this master pianist. And he had no, he had no prior, there's a whole interesting story about how it came about, but he, he had never played, he had taken lessons when he was seven for like a year. But he came back and now he's a master pianist. He's played at IANS conferences. He travels around the U.S. playing. Great guy, just a really cool guy. But everybody's story is there and it was really important for me because, because even with a five-hour film, most people are only going to get a few minutes on camera. But they all have something really important to share. So I wanted to make their interviews available. There's no subscription, there's no fees. I even cut out the ads on the YouTube ads, the mid-roll ads. So you can watch the entire interview from beginning to end. And that has been part of the, you know, one of the great things about all this is every morning I wake up now and there, there are comments in my inbox from people who are binge-watching these videos, you know, there's, like I said, there's almost 60 videos. So people, instead of Netflix, they're binge-watching these videos. And everybody is so grateful, you know, all the comments have been positive. It's been six months now for some of these interviews and, and, you know, everybody's been very grateful and thankful. And what I wanted to do, in addition to making sure that everybody's voice is heard. And by the way, I'm not cutting anybody out of the film. You know, a lot of these people traveled a great distance at their own expense to be part of this. So everybody's in the film, but again, I can only feature a few minutes. But they all had something really empowering to say. So their full interview is available. And then I also wanted to create a, a reference library for the audience. So after they watched the film, at the end of the film, I mentioned, you know, go to the website, go to the YouTube channel and you can watch everybody's full interview. So I wanted to create a way for people to get more information. I wanted to give everybody a chance to shine by having their story told in their own voice, you know? And so it's been, it's just been a fabulous experience, you know, and you know, I'm just hanging on at this point. I'm just trying to steer the ship, you know, it's kind of taken on a life of its own and you know, a lot of the people that said yes to this project, I would have never in a million years imagined that they would say yes. You know, and a lot of them went out of their way again to travel, to come to New Jersey. This is my living room, basically, guys. And this is where I've done a lot of the interviews. My deal is, if you fly into Newark, not JFK, but if you fly into Newark, I'll pick you up, I'll bring you to the location, we'll do the interview. If we have time, I'll take you out for dinner. If not, I'll take you back to the airport the same day. So you don't have to stay overnight. And some of the best times have been in the car ride back and forth to the airport, you know, where I really get to, to, to hang out with these people. And they're all, you know, every one of them has touched me. You know, this film, this film has changed my life. And I hope it does the same for, for the audience. So let's open it up for questions, comments. Again, don't forget, May 29th, there's going to be two screenings. You guys are all invited. If you, again, if, and if you want to participate in the, if you're an experiencer and you want to participate in the Q and A afterwards, I think we'll have room for you. So come out for that. Tell your friends. You know, I'm going to donate a portion of the proceeds to Connecticut IANS to help you guys fund, finance and, but it's very reasonably priced. You know, faculty, students and staff, it's five bucks in advance. General admission is $10 in advance and everybody is 15 at the door. So you can get your tickets ahead of time on the website. Again, it's everysoulknows.com. All right.
Thank you so much, Peter. Thank you so much. This is, this is really exciting. We are so excited to bring this here. And I want to just ask Tina, she usually facilitates our, our queue for questions. So go ahead, Tina.
Yes. It was interesting to see Tony again because we, Michael and I met him at a conference near Washington. And that was just a few months after I had my second near-death experience. I cried all, all the way through the whole thing. I was feeling everybody's feelings. I was crying on there. It was, but we had an opportunity to actually sit with Tony. And he spoke about his experience and he said that he had to actually go and learn music to be able to bring this, this symphony, whatever it was that was with him that he came back with. It's a wonderful person. Thank you.
Yeah, he's a beautiful guy. And this is, again, this isn't a guy, he has, he's a surgeon, you know, he has a medical practice. He's been telling a story for 20 years. Something like that, 15 years, you know, and he does it because he wants to be of service. He wants to help people. He wants to help alleviate some of that fear and, and, and everything else that people have around this whole idea of death. He wants to help alleviate some of that fear and, and, and everything else that people have around this whole idea of death. Good, Peter, you're next.
Okay, I just want to commend you and thank you for, for what you're doing. And I think the thing that you said that I love the most is, um, that we need to change, the whole world needs to change our consciousness to a unity consciousness. And that this film is, you know, a piece of helping us move in that direction. And I don't know, I just, I think it's fantastic. Thank you for living your life and doing this. Thank you to your brother that's in this and thank you. It's just terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, it's my hope. Again, I just want to plant that seed, you know, and, and just maybe give people a different way to think about a lot of this stuff, you know, and and then it's out of my hands, you know, it's, it's, everybody's got to decide for themselves. But I think it's a pretty compelling, the whole film, you know, I, listen, I still cry when I watch it, when I, you know, and I've been, I know every word of every interview, close to 100 hours of footage, and I still can feel, you know, I still get that, that feeling. So if I'm still feeling it, hopefully people, you know, will also, and everybody, you know, the screenings have been great, everybody's, people are just galled over by it. Bethany?
Yeah, I have lots of questions. I'm trying to pace myself. I know one at a time. So you ask a lot of questions of your interviewees and I wondered if you had a favorite question? And, and I also want to know how you came up with the questions.
Well, let me answer the second part first. So I, guys, look, again, I, I'm not, I don't hear voices, well, twice in my life I've heard voices and both of them were very short, one-sentence communications. Other than that, I'm not, I don't see beings, I don't hear voices, I don't get a lot of direct communication. But I do have a strong intuitive sense. And I just sat down one day and I just, I just started writing out questions, you know, and the, the list evolved. And again, if you go to the website, I put all the questions up there so people could see, you know, what we're covering in the film. And, um, you know, it was just, for me, it was just like, these are the, you know, so there, so there are some people who are very familiar with the esoteric, the mystical, the afterlife and all that. But there are a lot of people who never think about this until somebody passes in their family or they're faced with their own mortality, you know, but we all carry ideas with us from our childhood experiences, our cultural experiences and all of that. So it felt like these questions were representative of, of the most common questions. Excuse me, that people might have. My favorite question, you know, I don't have a favorite question. They're like my children. I love all of them the same. You know, and if you ask me, who's my favorite interviewee, I'll give you the same answer, you know, they're all, they're all my favorites. I feel so blessed, you know, I mean, again, it's just two, you know, two and a half years ago, this, it wasn't even really in my mind. I was working on this other film, you know, and then all of a sudden this got pushed to the, the front, the forefront. So who else? Or just, just general comments? Good, Michael?
It's Tina.
Tina.
Okay. Um, I've been involved with the Connecticut IANS for a little over 25 years. And, uh, I actually am the one that books the speakers. And it's been my experience that some of the experiencers have shared with me one-on-one, didn't want to share them, uh, this information, uh, when they actually did the speaking engagement, but they see entities that are not in human form. I'm wondering if you had interviews with anybody that has had those experiences and were they able to talk about it?
Well, yeah, you, you may know Trisha Barker. So Trisha had, uh, when she was 20, she had an NDE. She was in a car accident. And she left her body and, um, she got pulled into surgery, actually, and it was emergency spinal surgery. And after the, and during the surgery, she left her body, she could see the whole operating room and all of that, and she saw uh, these two light beings, angels, if you will, behind the surgeons working through the surgeons on her body. So she actually saw the energy go from the angels, the light beings into the surgeons, came through the hands of the surgeons and she saw it light up her spine as she was being operated on. That happened on, on a couple of occasions during the surgery. Then she, and she had a communication from the, because she was, she was 21 and she was afraid she was going to be paralyzed. And she had a communication from the angels telling her that she was going to have a full recovery. She was going to be okay. And after she came back and went through the whole process of healing her, her physical body, she started seeing those, those beings, those angels everywhere. You know, the title of her book is Angels in the OR and, um, there's actually a bunch of people that I've met that have those expanded capabilities, abilities. They're not always, um, they don't always manifest in, in physical form, but there is a sense of their energy, you know, most mediums have that in, in one way or the other, where they sense the energy of that being. So I don't know, Tina, does that answer your question? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, actually, uh, Trisha spoke with our group. She was, she came to, when we were meeting in person. She's absolutely wonderful. And I, you know, I see angels and all that stuff, but, um, I've had people share with me that they met up with entities that were not, that were extraterrestrials looking faces that were not human. And they actually stay in touch with them even after they've had their, their experiences.
Okay, Tina, so that's my next film. So I'm so far down the rabbit hole right now of the whole ET thing. I almost don't want to finish this movie because I want to get going on the next one. Yeah, there seems to be a high correlation between experiencers and contactees. Again, I don't have to tell you guys that. I'm sure you're familiar with all that. The, the, that's actually pretty new for me. It's only been in the last six months and not even. And now, just today, I'm, I'm reading all these books and watching all these podcasts. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing, actually. I think we're talking about higher dimensional beings, higher energies, you know, spiritually advanced beings, you know, obviously there is, there's some not so spiritually advanced ETs and, and all the contact that goes along with that. But, um, trying to think specifically, who is a contactee as well as an experiencer that I've met? I know they're out there and I think that's, you know, this is going to be part of the disclosure that's happening. I think it's part of our moving from 3D to 5D and all that stuff you hear now about the ascension, the awakening. Uh, I believe we're, you know, I believe we're being helped in, in many ways. I believe that, you know, there's, there's so much happening now, you know, behind the scenes that most people are not aware of, but I think a lot of that's going to come to light and it's going to be a lot more than just, you know, when they land on, on the White House lawn or whatever, you know, there's so much more to it. And there's a dark side to, to, you know, our involvement. My understanding is our government's involvement in some of this and the secret space program stuff and all that other stuff. I mean, it's, it's, it's brilliant and beautiful and it's also dark as hell. You know, there's some really horrible stuff that seems to be going on for, for decades now. So, um, but again, what I do, I want to really find a way to bring it, a, a positive, empowering, uplifting message. I don't want it to, I don't want it to be, and again, I'm not, I don't want to comment on how anybody else makes their films, but I, I really want to empower people with it, whatever I do in that regard. And I think the first-person accounts are really the best way to do that. You know, um, so that's what I got on that. Actually, I could talk all night on that, but that's, that's, that's what I'm, that's as much as I got for now. Okay, Kathy, you're up.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say very well done. I can't wait to see the whole thing. Um, and you know, it's just, it's all like very uh, familiar for me, just the whole belief that, um, we're not our bodies. That's been part of my reality for, for some time now and, um, there is no death and all of that. So yeah, it's all right up my alley. So I just really think you've done a really nice job presenting that. So again, can't wait to see it. So thank you for coming here tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me. And you got to remember, guys, I went to law school. I have an MBA, I have a law degree. I studied economics. I never even took like an art appreciation class in college. And I just, I just became obsessed with filmmaking. When I moved to LA, my, I wanted to work in the film business. I didn't even know why. And I really felt drawn to that industry and I worked as an attorney for almost 20 years. And that's where I, I kind of was exposed to the production process for the first time. And I became an amateur filmmaker and, and ultimately in 2008, I literally lost my law practice in the global financial crisis. I went from a nice six-figure lifestyle to, to nothing in a matter of months. But I had been, you know, I'd been on this journey of self-discovery and, you know, what is my passion? And while I enjoyed being a lawyer, it was never my passion. And so I looked at it as maybe an opportunity, you know, to do something that I really loved. And the answer was photography and filmmaking. So I, I, I made that choice and I actually moved back from Los Angeles. I moved back to the East Coast to be closer to my family. And I stopped practicing law. My family thought I was crazy. And, uh, for almost three years, nothing happened. And, um, then the money ran out, had a bunch of money saved, the money ran out and now it was time for me to really, you know, get my butt in gear. And I had all these excuses, well, why things weren't working out and, you know, the economy was bad and I didn't have a formal education in any of this stuff and but the problem, I found out the problem wasn't out there, the problem wasn't here. And I had a very negative self-image when it came to being a creative person and I was terrified of rejection and criticism. I mean, I couldn't even post photos on Facebook, you know, and, and I had gotten pretty good. I had spent all my spare time for almost 15 years when I was still a lawyer, I spent all my spare time learning photography, learning filmmaking and all of that. And I was, I was, you know, people told me I was good, but I didn't believe them. And I was just terrified that, you know, I was going to be ridiculed and all this other stuff. The money runs out, almost runs out, and now I got to start doing things like cold calling for, you know, I had a commercial photography business I wanted to do, fine art photography. And I went from somebody and I really, you know, and I'd been studying law of attraction and visualization and goal setting and doing all that stuff for years. And I finally said, okay, I got to kind of apply that. I found that the real problem was, you know, I, I, and this is what I talk about in my book. Don't go away. I'm going to show you my book. Oh, it's backwards. Can you guys see it? All right. So the title of the book is Be Bigger Than You Think You Are: Overcoming Our Self-Imposed Limits to Have the Life We Want. So it's all about how I transformed myself. Right? I was terrified to post photos on Facebook. I was, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't doing anything really to move my business forward or my life. Now the money starts to run out. I got to get off the couch. I got to start taking action. And I started doing things like goal-setting, visualization, affirmations. Uh, I found an action partner and I started doing all the things I was terrified to do. And I, in, you know, in a, in probably a year or less, I went from somebody who never won an award for anything in my life to somebody who's won more than 75 awards for my photography. I went from somebody who was afraid, afraid to post photos on social media to someone whose, my photos have been published in newspapers and magazines around the world. Literally millions of people have seen my work. And I, and I went from, you know, struggling to creating a nice little career for myself as a, as a visual artist, as a creative person. And I think the biggest thing that changed was the recognition that it wasn't anybody else's criticism of me that was the problem. Right? It was my own criticism of myself. And that's what created the fear. Fear equals resistance and resistance, I don't get off the couch. So as I say in my book, I had to go from being my own worst enemy to my own best friend. And it's a lot of, this book is, it's, it's a how-to book. There's, uh, it's a workbook, set up as a workbook. So at the end of each chapter, there are questions, but the biggest change for me was just learning how to love myself, how to accept myself, how to encourage myself, how to empower myself, uh, how to stop being afraid of other people's criticism, not taking anything personally. You know, one of the biggest lessons for me was to learn how to not take things personally. And that meant not only do I not take the criticism personally, but in an odd way, I can't take the accolades personally either. Now, why do I say that? Well, number one, especially when you talk about art, any kind of art or anything like that, it's a very subjective experience, right? And so people are projecting their own, people tell me, I've done some abstracts photography and, and they tell me all these things that they see in the photos and I don't know what the hell they're talking about. But if it speaks to them, I'm happy. It's, that's great. So it's a very subjective experience and, and my, what I found is some people love my work. Some people don't love my work. Most people in the, they're in the middle. They're not really, you know, they're not really, they don't feel really strongly either way. But it was great for me to be, to, to free myself from worrying about what are they going to think about me? Right? Worrying about, you know, are they going to like it and are they going to like me? Right? And to let all of that go and to let them have whatever experience they're going to have. And then, you know, I had to learn to go where the love is. So when people like my work, I establish relationships with them. I find ways to, to, to foster that. Uh, I did a TEDx talk in 2021, I think, on forgiveness. Now forgiveness is the longest chapter in my book. And, uh, somebody attacked me on Facebook. They said my photos were photoshopped. And that had come up a few times in the past. And in some cases, you know, I would get into a pissing contest with them and, and try to convince them that, you know, no, it's the real thing, you know, and that never went well. Uh, and then other times I would just block those people. But the other thing that I've been doing for 30 years is studying a course in miracles. Some of you guys may be familiar with the course. The course, the course is all about forgiveness, right? And one of the things the course says is, all attacks are a call for love. So now somebody's attacking me and I'm thinking, oh damn, I'm reading this book, this course in miracles thing, and it says, all attacks are a call for love. And the, the only way home is through forgiveness. So I, I'm not going to tell you the whole story. If you want to see it, go to my website for the book. The book website is bebiggertoday.com or just Google my name. And you can see the TEDx talk there. I get into all the details. But I actually transformed that whole experience to the point where the guy who was accusing me of being a fraud became a customer of mine and licensed some of my work. And that turned into an even bigger deal, financial deal for me. And that would have never happened if I took his comments personally, if I attacked him back and got into this argument with him on Facebook. Because I didn't do that, I reached out to him privately, direct message. I established a relationship with him. And eventually I overcame all of that negative energy and it turned into something really positive for both of us. So that's chapter seven in my book. I got way off track there. So, so the last thing I'll say about all of that is being the director of this film is definitely being bigger than I think I am because I still have those negative voices, right, that say, you know, who do you think you are? The original title of the book was, Who Do You Think You Are? And it's like, it's been very important for me to begin to question all those negative thoughts and beliefs that I have about myself because ultimately that's what runs our lives. We're not even aware, I'm not even aware in many cases of this negative programming that I carry with me from my childhood, which sabotages everything that I want to do in the world by telling me I'm not good enough. They're not going to like you. And by the way, it's going to be really painful. and by the way, it's going to be really painful, you're going to feel ashamed, you know, all of that stuff. So working through all of that, and now it's all in the book. And now doing what I'm doing is trying to embody all of that. All right, I'm, keep going, okay. Bethany, you're up.
Yeah, Peter, I, I was going to ask you if you could share, uh, screen share some of your photos because I've seen them on Facebook and they are really beautiful. Are there like two or three that you could share with us?
Well, I, I will invite people to follow me, to, to connect with me on social media, Instagram and Facebook. I have hundreds of photos up there. My website is peteralissandriaphotography.com. So again, if you, if you Google my name, you should find that. Uh, I'll see if I can pull up a couple. If you really want to see that. I have thousands. And again, don't ask me which my favorite is because they're like my children. I love all of them. All right, let me see if I could share this.
While you're working on that, Peter, I just want to give a shout out to Catherine Chapey, who um, you know, she has her meetings and I attended one of her meetings and you spoke there. And I was so inspired by your story about the movie and the excerpts and, and everything that, that is why um, we're hosting the meeting, um, you know, hosting the showing, you know, bringing you to Connecticut and um, you know, giving people an opportunity to, to really see your film and experience it. So just wanted to share that and thank Catherine for her uh, her inspiration and having you.
Catherine is amazing, you know, all, everybody from IANS has just been so helpful, so welcoming. You guys are just beautiful. I love the content, I, I'm, I didn't say this before, but can you see that photo, by the way?
Yeah, beautiful.
Cause I, I don't see the whole, I, I'm just seeing uh, doesn't look like it's all there. Let's see.
It's a portrait uh, format of the Statue of Liberty with a building with purple color behind it?
That's the Empire State Building.
Awesome.
See clock, clock tower?
Yes.
A lot of what I do is with the full moon or actually in this case, a crescent moon. I know I'm going quick, but I want to find. You know, take a look at the website. Cause it's all, it's all organized by um, it's all organized there. These are just kind of random photos and these are not actually the ones I wanted to show. So let me stop this. But again, let me thank everybody from IANS. You know, you guys have been wonderful. That conference in Phoenix was amazing. You know, it was such a beautiful experience. If you guys can make it to Chicago. Unfortunately, I didn't get a spot at the Chicago um, conference this year to show the film. But I may be showing the film at a, at a local venue uh, Thursday night, the finished film. So um, I'll, I'll see if I can, if I can arrange that.
Well, that would be awesome. That would be really great, Peter. Thank you for sharing that.
All right, anybody else? Any of you guys are experiencers? Again, if you can, if you can make it on the 29th, you know, to participate, you're welcome. Good, Bethany.
Thank you, I always have lots of questions. So I wonder with all the people you interviewed and all the experiencers you've spoken with, for me, I think that hanging out with experiencers really changes my vibe. And I wondered if you noticed something similar in yourself?
Yeah, you know, one of the reason, I mean, when I started out, I thought I was going to interview, interview 10 people. And you know, one of the reasons I've, I've interviewed over 60 people is I just love talking to you guys, you know? I love that whole, that whole thing. I mean, you know, we have the best, I've had the best conversations, again, in the car ride over dinner, you know, that kind of thing. And um, I, it's just for me, it's been so mind-expanding, so heart-expanding, you know? Um, everybody has been really, really just, there's no ego involved. There's, you know, everybody is just so kind, so generous. Um, honestly, it's kind of restored my faith in humanity. I mean, it's been very powerful to see how kind and caring and open-hearted and, and spiritually inclined people can be, you know? And um, it's beautiful. And that conference, again, if you guys, I don't know, maybe it was just me, but you know, Phoenix was amazing. It was just this energy for five days, you know, of just. And, and I, you know, I was a little biased because I brought the film there. We did a screening and then we did, we did a Q and A afterwards. And it was great, I hadn't seen a lot of people, you know? I, I, I mean, I see people, you know, I spend a few hours with them and then they're, they're kind of on to the next thing. But I lived with them for the next two years. I'm living with them, you know, in my head and the computer, you know, all that. Like I said, I know every word from every one of these interviews at this point. And um, it helps open your mind, helps open my mind and gives me a, a new outlook on life, you know? I mean, there's a lot to be pessimistic about, especially right now. And yet, you know, I do believe there's a bigger plan, you know? And there's something much bigger going on, you know? And, and I think ultimately it's, it's really going to be an amazing thing, you know, where we are. I don't know if it's, if it's, you know, next year or next decade, but I think it's coming. Patrick?
Hi, Peter. Um, I'm reading your book and it's actually very excellent. And um, it seems like what I need right now. I'm listening to it on audio, planning to go back through it. I actually just bought the workbook so I can do the exercises. Um, but it's empowering is right. I, I find it very empowering. And I'm feeling like I want to make some changes, kind of in the flavor of what you've done, but maybe not to that extent. Um, but, but I was going to ask about, is a project like this is huge? And um, so you end up with almost six hours or about six hours um, worth of film. Like, do you find yourself going through any changes by all of the things that you confronted uh, throughout the interviews and all the experiences you have with the various experiencers and people? Is there anything that's really stuck with you? Um, maybe you haven't shared just yet, I'm just curious.
Well, number one, thank you for, for reading the book. Um, uh, I want to mention to everybody, and maybe Patrick, you're aware, maybe you're not, on the bbegertoday.com website, there, there's about, there's probably close to 90 hours of videos for free on the, on that website. And what I did was during the pandemic, I took a group uh, on Zoom and we went through the entire book. So um, like an hour and a half, like 90-minute sessions, and we did it over 60 weeks. So um, it's all available if you're interested, you know? A lot of people watch those and it helps them with the book. So that's all available, it's all for free on the bbegertoday.com website. And it's a great resource, I think. And, and you know, the, the beginning, it was a little, you know, I was just kind of finding my way with that. But once we got in our groove, we had a great group of people and it was really, it was a very power, empowering experience. Again, in terms of me personally, you know, I think this whole thing has just been transformational. I think obviously the biggest thing was with my brother, you know? I mean, I was so distraught, my family, we were so, it was, it was so difficult, you know? And I didn't know I could feel so sad. And my dad had passed a few years earlier, but he had been ill for a long time. But with my, and it was very sad, but with my brother, it was, there was just something about it. He was my younger brother. I had a lot of regrets, I had a few regrets about the relationship. Um, and this is what I would say to anybody, you know? In the film, we talk about, so much about what it means to be spiritual. But we, we come here to this physical plane, to the earth plane, to be human, right? And part of being human is having all those feelings. So I don't, I, you know, it's like, I don't want people, so for me, it was like, you know, I have this belief that life is eternal. I had this belief that my brother is okay. I have this belief, this strong belief. But I also have this immense sadness that he's not here right now, you know? And that, and that maybe I could have been a better big brother or whatever, you know? Whatever those, those feelings were. And I let myself have the feelings. I didn't try to talk myself out of it, right? And so I would say to anybody, no matter what you think you, you know about the afterlife or about this life, have your feelings, you know? And if it's sadness, have that grief that, that, because I think if we don't allow ourselves to have those feelings, it gets stuck, you know? And there's a lot of people will tell you that, you know, trapped feelings in the body can lead to all kinds of problems, health problems and, and beyond. But, but just in general, you know, it was letting myself have those feelings. I spent a lot of time with my family. I, I spent a lot of time with my sister who was very close to him. And um, it was touch and go for a while. I mean, I actually thought about giving up on the movie, giving up on everything because I was just so distraught. It was hard for me to believe, you know, in a loving, benevolent universe when, when there's so much pain, you know? But I came back to some of the interviews that I had done that I hadn't watched and I, and I came back to the film. And eventually that's what moved me through it, you know, and got me through the grief. And so um, and now, uh, you know, I know that everything that we talk about in the film is true. I know it, there's no doubt in my mind, you know? It's not just a belief. And for me to be able to say that, I couldn't really say that before my brother passed. So again, I think that was all part of that journey for me, was to go through that with him and truly with him, you know? It was, it's, I, I feel like he really is part of this. I dedicate, again, I dedicate the film to him at the very beginning of the movie. I, I, I spend the first couple of minutes introducing the film and everything and I talk about him. And um, you know, it took the experience to the next level for me. So I don't recommend that people go through a terrible loss in their life to get to the other side, but it was really, uh, it was very healing for me, you know? And I, and I, and I, you know, I had, I hadn't seen him in two years and I felt this, this, we weren't as strange, but we weren't as close as we could have been. And I felt this, this calling to go see him. So I called him up and I said, look, I want to come down. He was, he, he, he was living in Florida. And I said, I want to come down for a week. And he said, yeah, he said, sure, come down. And you know, it was a little, we had, there was still some stuff between us, but you know, it was overall, it was a really good visit. I feel like I really, I had a feeling, I didn't know what it was, but I had a feeling that I should really make the most out of my time with him. And then two weeks later, he passed, you know? So, so there was definitely something bigger going on that orchestrated all of that. So anyway, to come back to the, the main point is have your feelings, you know? Whatever you're feeling, it's okay, you know? And we're, again, we're here to be human. We're already spiritual, we're already those eternal beings. But we're here to have this human experience because there is some benefit. There is some meaning in that experience.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thanks, Patrick. Oh, Bethany?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, Lori has her hand up too, but I'm going to pause the recording now. Um, and, and certainly we can go on to Lori's question, but I'm just going to pause that recording.